People that may get. The access code is on the town website in the calendar. The meeting access number is one, seven, nine, nine, five, seven, two, eight, six, seven. Password is Tuesday. When we get to public participation, which is not yet. We will accept the possibly one exception of a student. We will take public participation on items that are not on the agenda. If you wish to participate, if you are in the audience and you wish to participate on an agenda item. I will look for participation after the school committee members have spoken. Okay, the next item is approval of minutes of February ninth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comment on the minutes? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
And I will abstain because it wasn't Thea. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the warrant. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Martha?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the warrant. Any questions?
I have a comment. It wasn't a long warrant this month, but I noticed that there were a lot of orders from the same company. And I checked with Ms. Kasha and her, the business office just has done a wonderful job checking because with the craziness in our year, some of the orders may not have gotten, you know, called back in and the business office took care of that. Nicole, Kasha and Laura did that Nichols. So I want to thank the business office for staying on top of everything in the middle of all of this. So, thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Mr. Murphy?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Chairman votes aye. That's four, zero, one. Next, we will hear from the poet laureate.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor and pleasure to introduce Diana Watson, our Burlington High School poet laureate. School committee members often tell me this is one of their favorite agenda items every year is when they hear from our poet laureate. So without further ado, Diana, the floor is yours.
Is she here?
I thought so. Let me keep checking. Bob, do you see her? Diana Watson?
I don't see her here in the meeting.
All right, Mark, does he have to see her? So Madam Chair, can we move on if she pops in? We'll certainly do that. And if there's a scheduling conflict, we'll, we'll get her rescheduled.
That's fine. I just want to say before we move on that we have a very long agenda tonight. So I'm going to try to move right through it as quickly as we can without shortchanging any agenda item. Next item is public participation. Is there anyone here for public participation? If you're on the call and you want to speak about something, put your hand up by hovering over your name in the list of participants. Okay, Lynn. Lynn, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, my son wanted to make a statement. He is eight in the second grade.
Yep.
Chase?
And I, I told Martha and Lynn that we would take this, even though it's on an agenda item, that we'd take it under public participation because we make exceptions, the young, young boys in our school system and girls.
Thank you, we appreciate that. This is Chase.
Hi.
So he'd like to share his experience. You can read it or you can just talk, whatever you want to do.
I'm very nervous.
Yeah, that's okay, honey. Just do your best. No one's judging you.
I don't like homeschool at all. It stinks. You look at the screen and it doesn't help me learn a lot. You, your back can ache and you can get a headache. You stare at a screen all day long and don't get recess.
That's all he has. He's the man of few words.
I agree with you.
It stinks too.
Yeah, it does. We hope he can get back to school real soon. Thank you for participating. You did a great job.
You did.
Chase, thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else on the public participation?
Our group Burlington residents for full-time return to school put together an impact statement. I don't know if it would be a good time to share that now or if there's a different point in the meeting.
It actually should be when we discuss it, but.
That's fine.
It doesn't, you know, it's okay if you want to do it now.
I, I can wait, it's fine.
Okay. All right, next item on the agenda, it said, thank him, he did a great job.
I'm sorry.
Chase is adorable.
Monaco?
Yes.
Hi Angela. How are you?
Good.
Good. I'm sorry, I just didn't know, I was trying to find an updated agenda and I just wasn't sure if there was going to be a point in time. I just had a question on the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion update and I didn't know if this was a good time or if you.
Yeah, you, go ahead, you can ask it now.
Okay, I know I've been in contact with Dr. Conti and also Mr. Larkin about this. And I realize obviously the process, you know, is happening right now. Could you just provide a quick update on what's going on?
Sarah, was Sarah going to do that?
Yeah, I was actually, I have a bullet point for the Director of DI under my.
Okay, how, Angela, how about if, if she doesn't answer your questions, you ask them then, okay?
Okay, yeah, I just have some general questions in addition to that. So if that's a good timing, I'll wait for that.
Okay, it's the student rep. Is there anyone else to public participation? I don't see anyone. So we'll go to information and reports and we'll go right to Sarah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So for my first report is from the Senior Council. So the Senior Student Council, again, as usual, has been trying to plan out different ways to host our senior events. We're getting very close to the end of our senior year, which feels weird to say, but, but it is coming to an end almost in like a few months. So we're still hoping how we can like plan our like end of the year events. The Junior Student Council hosted a flatbread fundraiser in Roffel last week on the seventh. And the Sophomore Student Council is also planning multiple fundraisers and they will decide that in the next meeting. So I'll have more updates after that. As terms of, in terms of like things that have been happening in the school this month, the National Honor Society is actually leading a NHS Future Leaders Camp for middle schoolers. This is something that never happened before. It's completely new and this camp is supposed to be a way for eighth graders in the middle school to learn about NHS and ways for them to basically think above of like our values in NHS such as character, leadership, service, and ways for them to get involved in NHS when they come to the high school. So this camp is in the process of being organizing and it will happen in the next month or so. And we encourage all eighth graders who are interested to sign up for that. This, the next thing is the DESA Social Emotional Questionnaire. I'm not sure if Dr. Conti or anybody else is going to speak about it, but I just wanted to say that we took this questionnaire on Monday during our English classes. And this was a way for us to like, not test per se, but basically answer questions about like different social like skills and abilities. At the end of the questionnaire, we got these like ratings that included different skills that we all need in our lives in the classroom, such as responsibility, social awareness, decision-making, relationship skills, self-management and all that. So it provided feedback for our students. And the last thing is that the Brighton Racism Youth Group, as I mentioned last time, is working on the transportation like survey that will be sent out to all students. Again, this is focused on how like the lack of transportation for low-income students is affecting their ability to participate in extracurricular activities. And basically in, in general, get a sense of like what the low-income students need at our school. So the transportation survey was created in collaboration with the town's transportation committee and it's currently in the process of being like revised and edited. And soon we'll be sending it out to all high school students as well as middle school students. So that's one thing. And the equity, the District Equity Committee is going to meet this Thursday. So I'll have a report to give from the committee in the next, in the next meeting that we have. And as, as I give the report for the Director of DI, I'm pretty sure if Mr. Larkin is here so he can like jump in, but the Director of DI's process, as I mentioned in the last meeting, we, we had our first like initial like screening meeting as the interviewing processing group. And then we decided what candidates to interview and we actually held interviews last week. And I, I actually was not able to attend that meeting. So I will be attending this week's interviews, which, which is on Thursday. So I'll have more information to give about that, but I don't know if Mr. Larkin wants to jump in and talk about any of that. If he's here.
Yeah, thanks, Sarah. Through the chair. I, I don't really have a big update. I mean, I think the last time we spoke, we talked that we had forty-six applicants and we were starting the initial round of interviews. So we have interviews, we had some last week, we have some this week, and then we have some next week. And at that point, once we finish that first round of interviews, the committee will decide which candidates to move on to the finalist round. So that's, that's where we stand at this point.
And I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding the Director of DI, but that was the end of my report.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Are there any committee members that have questions for Sarah?
Yeah, I just briefly wanted to know, I just wanted to state, there, there's been some confusion among some of the parents regarding the DESA screening and.
You break it up, Martha.
Never mind.
Okay. All right. Angela, did you want to ask whatever questions you wanted?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did, I did have some questions and concerns that I wanted to express. I know the process is ongoing and kind of in the middle of it. And I realized that we do have applicants that you're looking at. And I think in an effort to just kind of convey what other parents are feeling and also just some concerns that have come up recent, just even in our own area, in our own news about this position and things that have come up with the topic itself, I just wanted to kind of first ask, is, I know that the Equity Committee was working obviously on this closely, is the Equity Action Plan that was presented at town meeting used as like the working document of what executions are going to be fulfilled by this position? And is that kind of where we're going with this position? That's my first question.
Dr. Conti?
Again, Madam Chair, just Ms. Hanifin, why don't you just go through all your questions? So I understood the first one, the, is the action plan connected? What, what else?
Yes, that would probably be my first. And then based on your response, I have other comments to that. I guess my concern is, you know, the document was presented at town meeting and it's a good twenty-page document with a lot of ideas being put forth. And I just want to know, is that what is driving in your selection process with, you know, the caliber of people that you want? Are they going to be fulfilling these action plans? Or is this a suggestion? Or do you have another idea of what you're expecting in this position?
Again, Ms. Hanifin, I'll, I'll share my individual thoughts, but the Equity Committee itself did a lot of work on the document. And I would say no single individual is responsible for implementing the, the entire action plan. I'm sure there'll be pieces of it that the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion will be very involved with and leading. And there'll be other parts of that document that I'm sure the committee or students will, will demonstrate some leadership on. And I'd probably need to go through some specifics on the document to, to answer what this particular position will be doing. Like any other job, I think we're going to try to find the best match. And depending on the person, everyone has individual strengths and areas that they need to improve on, we'll, we'll try to match up the person's strengths with the, the areas of the action plan and potentially other areas that they would be focusing on. So again, the, the plan is, was very comprehensive. I, I don't, we're not saying, you know, here's, you know, multiple pages of responsibilities, you know, take this on by yourself.
And I think maybe then, I guess my first would be to those that are in on those committee meetings, to make note of some concerns that have come up with some of the suggestions or possibilities that this position might bring. Things like the mentioning of cultural, cultural responsive curriculum, does that mean rewriting history or adopting the progressive teachings that might be coming? Also, you know, they're mentioned in there about anti-racist curricula at all levels across the school. And does that mean adopting things like, are we naming the sixteen nineteen project as far as our American history curriculum that was mentioned? That would be one of the first things to be changed. And that also teaches, you know, that America is fundamentally racist and a lot of people don't agree with that, as well as things like critical race theory, which, you know, that can, that's a theory in itself. And I think a lot of people have problem with that being implemented in our schools, which has also come about recently in the news, implemented in other school systems that have brought some major concerns to parents. Also things that have brought up about de-leveling academics that were also mentioned in that document, which, you know, I've heard my, you know, many parents that leave Burlington Schools for that reason because they feel that they are not, and they seek private schools because they want the access to excellence and not having things de-leveled. They want the opportunity for their children. So I feel like that, you know, implementing something that is only going to hurt us further. There are also mentions in there as considering the US flag as triggering and not saying or teaching the Pledge of Allegiance to our children. That was a concern of others. And also, you know, as a whole, the idea and hearing the idea of Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion sounds very innocent, but along with that can come some significant changes that I think people are aware of, especially in the recent news. And we hear about teachers and coaches that are being fired because they don't agree with what's being taught in the schools. And I just wanted to ensure that this is a position that would allow a safe place, not for just the diversity of demographics, but also for a diversity of thought and that all values would be respected if they don't agree with what's necessarily being taught and that we're not going to have kids being canceled or teachers being canceled and fired because of something they may have said. So that is probably one of my concerns. And then on a personal note, just, you know, also being, you know, aware of this position in, of directly diversity, equity, inclusion in other schools in some of my other children, our other children's schools. I would be like weary and hope that the candidate that we choose is really one that truly looks at this as a whole, not just as a race issue, but as a whole. Because a lot of this has turned schools in an effort to be uniting. It's very dividing. It can be very dividing. We witness that ourselves and the students feel very separated. They are broken off into several different, you know, groups. And they just feel like they get bombarded all the time. And that idea of bringing that unity isn't there. So I just wanted to kind of, I hope that, that is something that is being thought of and considered very carefully in respect to this position and hoping that maybe, and hope, like Burlington can do it differently because this can be very divisive and has been and has instead of included, it's, it's secluded a lot of people. So it can go either way. I feel like it, it can be something that can bring about, you know, something good. But in a lot of experiences, it, you know, it can be very divisive. So I would hope that, you know, I encourage parents to look at the backup material from the September thirtieth town meeting that, in Article Seven that was presented, it was twenty pages worth of an action plan of ideas. And I know Dr. Conti, you mentioned that not, that's not necessarily something that was saying this is going to happen, but these are all suggestions that we see going around our area and being implemented. And I just hope that we can do it, do it right.
Thank you, Angela. Eric, you want to address that quickly?
I, I can't really address it quickly. I guess what I would say, Ms. Hanifin, is, is our objective is never to divide. And while I don't agree with some of your points, I, I heard them. And I think the fact that we're having these conversations is, is really important and we need to have more of them. So I, I, I don't think, I think they're, they're difficult conversations. I don't think there's any conclusion that's predetermined, but I do think we need to enter into these conversations. And I'm honestly looking for someone who has a skill set to, to help us have these conversations and to move forward. So I certainly don't want to be exclusion, exclusionary of anybody, but, but I do think there are some challenges and issues that we, we do need to recognize and address moving forward. So Madam Chair, I, I don't, we could spare a couple days on this and.
I know.
And again, I, I do want to thank Ms. Hanifin for her comments. I, I, so I think, and like I said, while I, while I don't agree, I want to make sure I'm listening respectfully to everybody.
Thank you. Angela, anytime that you see or feel anything that you think isn't going the way it should go, we're here to listen to you. So make sure you stay on top of your concerns. I, I understand what Eric's saying, that he doesn't necessarily find that he agrees with all of those. I don't think that we would in this school department do anything divisive or it isn't considerate of others in every way. So just let us know as we go along if, if things are going okay.
Thank you. You know, and I appreciate the, the fact that you will listen and just that the opportunity is there for others too that would like to express, you know, concerns that they have too.
Absolutely. Thanks. Okay. If there's nothing else under the student rep report, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. Do we have any subcommittee reports?
Could I interrupt under, under the student, the student part? Just sorry.
Go ahead, Patrick.
Did you, I missed the beginning. So did you mention the girls' basketball team?
No, Patrick, we did not.
All right, well, so we should mention the girls' basketball team just finished an undefeated season and won the Middle Sex League for the first time in like twenty-five years or something. So I, I want, and then we also posted on the website over the weekend and it's a little, it's a little bit late. But again, since this, sorry, Sarah to jump in and I was not in the office today, I would have collaborated with Sarah on this. But we had a number of students win scholastic writing and art awards, including some, some gold keys. So I just wanted to mention those as well.
Patrick, we'll, we'll put that list out and have that. They were the great concert too. And I know, Ms. Simon, you wanted to, us to play some of those tunes. So we, we were trying to spread that out over the next few meetings. So.
Okay. I just wanted to get it while it was still fresh news anyway, so.
Absolutely. It's real positive news. So, so thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
Nope.
That's okay. Tom, you wanted to say something?
Actually, I was going to bring up the girls' basketball team. So thank you, Patrick. In top of winning the championship, they're also undefeated. I don't know if Patrick mentioned that. So it's an outstanding season in a very difficult situation. So kudos to the coach and kudos to the players.
Great. Okay, any subcommittee reports? No. Moving on, is there anyone here from Ways and Means? Roger, are you here?
Hi, Madam Chairman. Yes, I'm here. I don't have anything in particular. I'm looking forward to the budget introduction later in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Move on then to coronavirus update from the superintendent.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair. This, I think agenda item is getting a lot of attention. So I want to make sure that I sort of state what I know and also state what I don't know and that things are changing certainly weekly, and it seems to be more than frequently than weekly as, as of late. So I think we'll start with the sort of easier question is, we are planning a full return for the fall. So if there's any question about what our fall planning is, what we're hearing about in terms of the progress of vaccination, even in the pediatric realm, I believe that the summer will provide the opportunity for us to plan for a more typical school opening and school schedule. So I think that's, that's, I just didn't want there to be any question about that. The questions about next fall are whether the state is going to continue to allow any sort of remote instruction to occur. And the state hasn't made that determination. They had not allowed remotest instruction prior to. My belief is they will not allow remote instruction moving forward. And while remote instruction, we heard, doesn't work for every child, we heard from one today, I also hear from other children that it does work. So I think the state is going to be providing us some guidance there. But I just want to state for a third time, our plan, planning for the fall is for a, a more normal, a full return, what, however you want to characterize it, students in school, five days a week. So I wanted to start there. There's lots of push to have our schools open more. There's some conflicting advice between the National CDC and what we can do physically at the secondary level. Most of the attention early has been on the elementary level. As you all know, our elementary schools are open five days a week. They have been open five days a week since September tenth. They have been open five days a week since September 10th. So let me say that again. Our elementary schools have been open five days a week since September 10th. Many of the districts that are moving to open schools are moving to open to a schedule that we are providing currently and have provided since September 10th. Our teachers have come into work every day and have come into work without being vaccinated and have done a great job in person and have done a wonderful job remotely. So when we're talking about the elementary school, we're really talking about the extending the afternoons. And that is largely not going to impact, when I'm talking about the instructional part of the day, the core curricular part of the day, because a lot of what we have to work out are going to be lunch and recess logistics. And then we'll probably be able to have a 30 to 45 minute afternoon lesson, which is what has been happening remotely at home. So concurrently to these changes, the state has removed the distancing requirements placed on transportation. So I'll give Bob a few minutes to talk about. He's started conversations with the bus company in terms of looking to address that. In addition, I think there was an announcement this morning at the governor's press conference that he may be removing remote and hybrid options. And what he was talking about is not allowing that instructional time to be counted towards the student learning time regulations that we are accountable for providing. So if he removes the remote and hybrid hours, then we would be forced to have students in school more. Again, in Burlington, that would basically mean an additional, roughly an hour and a half at the end of the day. So that's what it would be, my understanding. And I think Mr. Foss confirmed to me earlier in the day that he was going to allow parents who have chosen fully remote this year to remain in a fully remote situation through the end of the year. And the state was talking about changing these regulations. He has to do it at a state board meeting. And I believe the next state board meeting is in the next couple of weeks. So in the middle part of March, and he would be implementing those changes for the beginning part of April. So again, the challenge for Burlington is not to open more days. We're already open five. The challenge for us would be to look at some of the logistics around lunch and recess. And then making sure that we have space. Warmer weather will certainly help us if we can have more of these activities outside. So again, in short, because I could go on and things could change tomorrow. It looks like elementary will be getting our earliest attention. And it looks like we may be, may be getting, we were moving in that direction anyway. But we may be getting a nudge from the state if they remove the remote and hybrid option as counting towards learning time. And what would, what we are sort of working on and have been working on is a plan to get the students fed and have them participate in recess safely. Those are both higher risk activities from my perspective. Making sure that our staff can stay safe and they have the ability to get a mask break and eat themselves. And, and then again, looking to extend the day for a more normal time. There were some suggestions that we extend an hour. And in speaking to elementary principals, they feel it would be a lot of work to make an adjustment. It may be less work for us just to go back to a more standard schedule for, for a full day. So I don't, I don't think we need an intermediate step. And I just think we need to have some conversations. I just want to make sure I just remind the committee, as I've repeated, this is not going to add a significant amount of instructional time to the elementary day. The majority of time we'll be adding would be for lunch and for recess. Those activities are taking longer than usual because of the other safety protocols that are in place. Asking a classroom full of students, elementary students, especially young ones, to wash their hands is not something that happens in a minute. So they sort of, there needs to be some coordination to there. So these activities take a bit longer than usual. But so people are asking me for a firm date and I'm reluctant to give a firm date because again, everything changes so quickly. But it looks like towards the middle to end of March, the State Board of Education is going to be moving in this direction. And we were going to be moving in this direction anyway. I would think by April, we would see our elementary schools open more. Again, they're open five days, but have them look a little bit more typical than they have looked. So Madam Chair, for secondary, honestly, the CDC is going to have to, the state and the CDC are going to have to make some decisions about distancing. We can't collapse our cohorts without, without compromising on the social distancing that's available. We just don't have enough room in our classrooms. So hoping that a, within, you know, as vaccinations get more available, as more educators can have access to the vaccine. And, you know, as the state continues to evolve their testing protocols, that we'll be able to move forward there. I do think they're going to, they being the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, is going to focus on elementary first and then make the push towards secondary afterwards.
Okay, thanks, Eric. I know there are parents that want to speak, but before we do that, I'd like to go through the committee. Is there anyone on the, Tom, go ahead.
I have a question that's, that's related to this, but it's not elementary specific. That's, and I've had some inquiries about this over the last couple of weeks. The, the sporting events during the gap season, which is starting shortly, is the, the same rules that were in effect for the winter season in terms of no spectators, are they going to carry through or are they going to loosen up a bit? Obviously, most of the input that I'm getting is from parents, so they certainly have their perspective on it. But I, I agree with them on this, that numbers are clearly going down, vaccines becoming more available. And rest fronts are loosening. Other areas of the, of the, of the Commonwealth are loosening the strings a bit. And it would seem to me that it's not unreasonable to allow two parents per player to, to sit in the large gym and spread out. And for volleyball, for instance, or whatever else is going on. So I, I know we've been handling this by, through, through the league consensus. And I'm not sure what the process is or how that, if that's even been discussed yet. But is that something that is being looked at or considered? Or is that a decision already been made?
We had an early meeting just about having the sports run at all. For Mr. Murphy, we did agree to, I'll get you the list. But I think volleyball is certainly in the fall too. They're calling the, the gap season. And the other sports are largely going to be outside. So I think the rules for spectators outside are going to be different. We do have a meeting this Friday morning and I think spectators are going to be on the agenda for us. Our goal is to try to do something, keep to something common across all 12 league teams. The compromise, Mr. Murphy, may be that we focus on senior parents as opposed to other students. But it, we're going to talk about it. So I'm hoping we can modify a little bit from our winter, winter position because some of the, the, as you mentioned, the, the contexts are changing a little bit.
Thank you. I would certainly encourage that conversation and hopefully they can, they can make some adjustments. That would be great. Thank you.
All right. Other committee members on the topic of more school time. Martha.
I, I guess I, I would like, I'm glad to hear that Dr. Conti feels confident that our goal is to be open full time in the fall and that there are these plans that are starting to be made for the spring. And I guess I might, I want to hear more from what other parent concerns there are. I do have some suggestions about particulars that I've heard from parents. But I also think that Dr. Conti's probably thought of all of them already. So I don't want to go through them all one at a time. But I, I may want to speak afterward. Thank you.
Okay. Hang on, guys. It'll start ringing in a minute, but I can't get to it. Any other committee members want to speak on this? Kyle, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, as the day increases at the elementary level, if there is desire by families to change their students' model, is that something that this district is going to be willing to consider or able to, to make those kind of changes?
Mr. Foss, it's going to depend on the numbers, like we said, in the, in the wintertime. So we have about 400 fully remote elementary students in the remote academy. Our intention would be to keep the remote academy intact through the end of the year. I think a lot of parents and students really value the relationships they've dealt with those teachers and I think they would stick to them. They're, they're already going a full day remotely. So the remote, the full in-person day, again, the, the length of day would be the same. You know, could we accommodate some? The answer is, you know, yes, I, I think. But we're sort of at the point where if we have a large number of people who want to come back into the schools, that would impact our social distancing mitigation. And if we had a large number that wanted to leave the schools, we would need to have some teachers move to be fully remote because we don't want our remote classes getting too large either. So again, I don't mean to answer these questions in such a long fashion, but there's so many details that go into this. So we're, we're sort of stable where we are. Any large movement of kids is going to create a cascade of events. But our social distancing at the elementary schools, which is as close to six feet and at six feet as we can be, would be diminished if a group of students wanted to move back into school.
Kyle, do you have anything else?
No, thank you very much.
Catherine, do you have anything before I go to parents? Okay. Before we go to parents, I've, I've had a tremendous amount of input and correspondence relative to getting kids back to school. And I have to say that based on personal experience, I think that the kids are really getting a rough deal here. I understand all the complications. I understand the social distancing. I understand, I had COVID. I know how awful it is. But we have kids that are having nervous breakdowns. We have kids that are spending weeks in mental hospitals. We have kids that are miserable. They're not learning. They're home, doing nothing but eat. They're gaining weight. We have a problem and I think we really need to work very hard to get our kids back to school as soon as we possibly can. I have a couple of things. One thing I would like to do is with the committee, I would like to send a letter to Governor Baker outlining the hardships that the kids are going through, which leads to a need for teacher vaccines. And I think that teachers should be prioritized. And I would like to put that in a letter from the committee. Eric, just quickly, doesn't the elementary get out now at 11:30? And, and so if they got out at regular time, wouldn't that be closer to three o'clock?
We have some elementary principals on the, on the call now. I think three of the schools get out about 11:30. And one of the schools gets out at 12 because we need 30 minutes for, for a bus run. I think, I think the 11:30 schools get out a little bit after two. John Lyons, did I see you on the call?
Yes.
What, what would be a normal dismissal day in a regular year?
Normal dismissal day in a regular year would be about 2:15.
And you're dismissing now at 11:30?
Right.
So.
So it's, it's close to three hours, two hours and 45 minutes. So I think we really need to look at that. You know, it isn't just adding a tiny bit of time. These kids are really not getting the time they should have. I would like, Eric, for a goal for all of us to have for the next meeting is a firm date on some of these questions. One of them is when will the elementary go for the full day? The sooner the better. If you can do it before the next meeting, I'm all for it. How much distance can we get at the secondary level? Because the middle school parents are miserable. A lot of the high school parents are miserable. That's where we're running into the kids. I have a granddaughter who loves to sit home and eat all day because she doesn't have much else to do. I think we, we need to know how much distance we can get between the students at the middle and the high school. And I would like finding that out to be a goal for the next meeting as well. Because the state did say in the fall, and it was reiterated today, that three feet was acceptable. Now, I know that isn't great. I do know that, I believe I sent you a study from a pediatrician that showed the, that with masks, three feet and the six feet don't make any difference. But that's one study. So I would like to know how much space we could get between kids at middle and high school. And I think it's, it'll really be nice to get the elementary kids back in full time. But I think that we're shirking our duty if we don't do something more for the middle and high school kids. The very least, the first step, in my opinion, would be to, instead of having them go Monday and Tuesday, have them alternate Wednesdays so that they got three days in and then two days in and then three days in. And I think I'll just go to parents now, if that's okay with you, Eric. Catherine.
I just wanted to add to that as far as, you know, reading some emails from some parents. And I just want to know what we're doing with some of the students where we've noticed a dramatic drop in terms of their grades. I mean, reading straight A students who are now getting Ds and Fs. And, you know, how, how are we going to catch those kids up or fix that situation? And that's a huge concern of mine, you know, that these kids who were, you know, thriving are, are not now. And I, I'm not sure how we're going to deal with that.
I agree. Parents that would like to speak, please hover over your name and put your hand up. Kristin, Suzha.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Great. I appreciate you bringing those points up, Ms. Monaco. I concur with all of them. I'm here really just on behalf of the, the middle school and high schools. It's great news about the elementary students. I have a fifth grader and I'm thrilled to hear that we're going to be getting them in full time. But from what I've seen, it's the teenagers who are struggling the most because the kids, the elementary kids have been in every single day. And my son is thriving. He comes, he gets up every day with a purpose. He comes home energized. It's been wonderful. It's the teenagers who wake up every day with no purpose and are sitting on this, on their screen all day long. And by the time dinnertime comes, they're in tears. I guess, I guess at the end of the day, count. countless medical experts have confirmed that kids being out of school is causing irreparable harm mentally and in some cases physically. I think they're all in agreement. The CDC and other medical experts are also saying that teacher vaccinations are not necessary for a safe return to school. Although we would all love for them to have them, they are saying it's not necessary for a safe return. Additionally, the CDC says that in towns where there is lower risk, it is safe to space kids less than 6 feet apart. Just today, the Massachusetts Commissioner of Education in a press conference said there is virtually no difference between 3 and 6 feet in regards to safety. I just want to understand why we are so complacent in regards to the mental health of this age group. At the end of the day, I'm pleading with you to not disregard the medical advice and to not disregard the teenagers of this community. We have to move forward. It can't wait until the fall.
Okay. Thank you, Kristin. Lynn, you, would you like to speak?
Yes. Our group Burlington Residents for Full-Time School put together an impact statement in which we actually, I'm a researcher and I'm also a clinical psychologist. So when the school closures happened, I knew, I knew what this would mean for mental health. And now we have the data to show it. So Gail and I went through and put our research brain on and did some PubMed sleuthing, accessed our university library databases and put together the statistics. And it surprised even me how bad it is. And so I agree with everything Kristin said. It is a public health crisis for sure. And not just for elementary, it's all age groups. They're really impacting and we're impacted and we're even harming the longevity of our children. Just the school closures alone in the spring caused an average of 6 months loss of life for the children that were affected by it because of the additional inactivity time that they have, all the different mental health challenges, less educational attainment. All of those cascading effects are going to impact their longevity. So we're not just talking now about education versus public health. It's education and public health versus public health. And the evidence is, on the scales, overwhelmingly in favor of reopening, at least if children are your main priority. So I'm happy to share that. I have it on my screen. If I have the ability to share my screen here, I can pull it up. And I have those statistics.
Lynn, could you, could you email them to us so that we, we like to keep each person to 3 minutes? If you could email them to us and say anything you want to about them right now, but I promise you, we will study them carefully.
Okay. And the highlights are children are sitting 9 and 1/2 hours a day. That's horrendous. 2.3 hours less per week of sports activities. Screen time increased by 4.85 hours per day. Achievement gaps increasing by 15 to 20%. And loss of 6 months lifespan just in the spring alone. So that is definitely increased since then. Mental health-related ER visits are up 24% for young children and 31% for older children. So those are just some of the highlights that we found in the literature. So this is all peer-reviewed literature that we're citing here. So it's really a big crisis. I will send that around. I think also that our effort there can be used in advocating for vaccinations for teachers. So feel free to borrow from our letter, you know, and add your bits when you're advocating for that because it's just so important. We need to do everything we can to serve the kids.
Thank you. We will use it, the letter to the governor. Beth Colburn.
Hi, everybody. I'm Beth Colburn. I have 3 kids in the district, and I am also representing the Burlington CPAC. I just wanted to quickly ask a question. Will the BECC be included in the elementary full-day conversation? Or is that kind of a separate piece?
Beth, I think it's sort of a separate piece. Again, I'm not adverse to having those conversations, but it.
The state isn't making you do it.
No, and, right. So it would be a separate conversation.
Okay. And I also have just one comment. I know you're talking about, you know, an hour and a half of additional learning time. I'm getting the vibe that it's, it's kind of like, oh, well, it's not that much that's being added. But beyond learning time, I just want to also add that for special ed students, that's additional opportunity to get services that you might not then be pulled from core academic subjects or lose time with neurotypical peers. And I think that's really important, and I didn't realize how much of a gift that would be. So I just wanted to toss that out there as well.
Thank you. I wasn't trying to minimize that time, but I appreciate your comments.
Thanks.
Okay. I don't see any other hands up. And I think maybe we can leave it here with hopes that some of these questions will get answered in the near future.
Ms. Monaco, you don't have to hope. We'll answer the questions. So we'll, we'll, we'll get you answers.
I'm big on hope.
May I comment?
Yes, go ahead, Martha.
I also, I do, I do feel like there isn't one thing I can comment on because there are so many pieces to this. And I'm looking forward to hear, I, I know at one point, one of the 2 biggest obstacles was the bus transportation. So Dr. Conti said we'd be telling us more. And so if there are others, and you've mentioned tonight, the other major barriers being, how do we logistically get all the kids lunch and recess and in a safe way and, you know, that kind of stuff? So I'm really glad to hear that. I want to encourage you, Dr. Conti, and the whole district to continue to be as communicative as possible. I think people, you know, having you be able to tell us tonight that the plan is to open in the fall and to continue to open this spring as much as we can is really important for people to hear. It's the not knowing that is, makes it, on top of all of the difficulties that Lynn Bothier has mentioned, all the difficulties that Mrs. Monaco has mentioned, just not knowing makes it even harder. So I appreciate that you've been able to give us some specifics, although, you know, we all wanted a date. And, you know, there isn't a date yet because all the pieces are not yet in place. But the more you can share with us, one particular suggestion. There were a couple of parents I spoke with who were glad that you're doing your Friday videos. And maybe you can add as much possible information and dates and updates on these kind of logistics. And, you know, we worked out the bus problems and now we're still working on the lunches. Or I don't know what you would say, but I want to encourage as much communication as possible because I think hope is an important piece for the parents, but also for the students. If the students know that there's an end to this, I mean, we all want it to be over, and it isn't over. There's still a global pandemic. But if we know when certain things are going to be over, it can help. And I really appreciate you sharing tonight and hopefully continuing to communicate as much as possible as we go forward. Thank you.
Eric, the poet's here. Should we take a break from this and go straight to her?
I think that would be wonderful.
Okay.
Diana, Diana, I introduced you earlier, but Diana Watson is our Burlington High School poet laureate this year. Our Poetry Out Loud competition, all high school students participate. And Diana is going to do a recitation for us this evening. So Diana, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours. If people could mute while she's doing it, that would be wonderful.
Thank you for that introduction. My poem is "I Find No Peace" by Sir Thomas More. I find no peace, and all my war is done. I fear and hope, I burn and freeze like ice. I fly above the wind, yet can I not arise? And not I have, and all the world I season, that loses nor locketh, nor holdeth me in prison, nor holdeth me not. Yet can I escape no wire? Nor leteth me live nor die at my device? And head of death, it giveth me occasion? Without eye and icy, and without tongue, I plain. I desire to perish, and yet I ask help. I love another, and thus I hate myself. I feed me in sorrow and laugh in all my pain. Likewise displeases me, both life and death. And my delight is cause of this strife. Thank you.
That was wonderful.
Diana, what was the competition like virtually? Is it hard to recite or to perform in front of a computer?
It was definitely really strange, but I found it a lot easier for me personally, because I'm very shy in person, to record myself and just send it in. I think it definitely helped us shy kids in the background to really project.
Wow. Certainly appreciated. It's a fantastic accomplishment. And we appreciate how you represent Burlington High School and all of Burlington with your performance. Do you move on now to a, is there a state competition as well?
Yes, I move on to the state final.
And when is that?
I'm not sure because everything's so like, because everything is so virtual, it's like hard to like figure out when things are actually happening. I think they're doing judging sometime this week.
Well, we wish you the best, and please let us know how you do. We'll make sure Mr. Sullivan keeps us apprised. And we hope to be sharing in more of your recitations as you continue to do really well. So again, thank you so much for sharing your talent with us.
Thank you so much for having me and allowing me to have fun. It's really cool.
I think Mrs. Simon wants to speak, but before you do, Martha, Diana, that was really beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day, guys.
Martha, go ahead.
Just, this is a way to say applause in American Sign Language, and it's a way to visually do that. So I was just congratulating Diana.
Okay.
Wonderful.
All right, back to hardcore business here. Remote learning and snow days.
Mrs. Monaco, again, you asked that this be on the agenda. There was some conversation at a prior school committee meeting about whether we were going to continue the practice of having, excuse me, remote learning during snow days and not having full snow days. What was expressed by the CPAC is they felt that was an inequitable practice. I think since that time, we've had, I'm going to call them traditional snow days, for lack of a better term. I don't think we've had any remote snow days. I think it's a tool that's available this year that I don't think is going to be available in future years. And at this point, I'm hoping, knocking on wood, that we're not going to have any more snow. So that's the, that's the plan. But as I tried to convey on the evening of the school committee is, you know, I certainly understand, and we try to make the best decisions we can for all students. And I'm not sure this, this issue has gone, I think it's, I'm not sure how much more conversation you want to have on it. I think I was leaning towards having full snow days. And hopefully, we won't be in that position again. And I think this is one of the decisions the state has to make for next year. My belief is they will go to not supporting remote instruction again unless it's some sort of systematic way, and we'll have more traditional snow days. And while we're having this conversation, because I am confident that we won't have any more snow, that it looks like, and I have to double-check this, that the last day of school for students and teachers will be Wednesday, June 16. So I think we had to add 2 days to get us to the 180. So we're looking at Wednesday, June 16 currently. So again, Ms. Monaco, Madam Chair, what else would you like me to say? That we won't do any more remote days if we get snow? Is that what, we haven't? So.
I was, I was happily surprised that you didn't. I think Beth Colburn has her hand up. Beth, do you want to add something?
Yes, I would. I know the state did say that they could have remote snow days during the pandemic. But I guess I thought it was odd that I didn't see it come up at school committee for discussion since it does still significantly impact students. And so while I also would hope that there would be no more snow days, I'm from Buffalo, so I never know. And I do think it's worth making a decision about it, having a discussion about it, making sure you're looking at it from all angles. Obviously, I'm here to talk to you about it from a special need perspective. I do want to reiterate a couple of things about it. One, you know, when you have scheduled remote supports for special education students that I also think is very assuming to think that it's successful on a regular day, I just want to say that those things also don't naturally carry over in supporting children at different times of day during different subjects, things like that. It also doesn't factor in teachers, aides, support staff, therapists, whose kids are now home. Parents are still working from home. It doesn't, it's not a seamless transition in my mind. And just like how, you know, an hour and a half doesn't sound like a lot of missed time, you know, you might say it's just one day, but, you know, when you're in special ed, every minute counts. And so if my child is maybe not getting his best education from a remote snow day, I'm incredibly concerned about it because everything is hard for my child. And I want him to have the best possible circumstances when he's receiving his education. And I think the priority is a question, is the priority of having a remote snow day so that we can get out. Or is it to provide students with their best education and emotional, social needs? So I think that's a conversation that's worth having personally. And I do think it's a decision that should be made by more than one person.
Yeah. So Eric, didn't we sort of have an understanding that we wouldn't even think about remote unless we went beyond 3 snow days? You're muted.
Madam Chair, my recollection is we had that conversation last year when we were about remote as a sort of a separate system. The remote instruction that's happening, that was happening this year is, I would say, a little bit, a little bit different. And so, you know, that's ultimately where we are. Ms. Colburn, what I would say is I certainly heard you. I don't disagree with many of your points. I will say it's never about getting out of school earlier. That's, that doesn't enter into my mind. I'm looking for high-quality days. And what I might add is, June 16, again, while every minute is precious, if we go to June 17, that may not be such a high-quality educational day, although still important. When it comes to inclement weather days, and I think what you're saying is, whether remote days should count is a larger conversation, and I would agree with that. But the ultimate call on whether we have school or not, I would welcome if the school committee would like to take over that responsibility, but I don't think you'll get takers to do that. So at some point, it does have to come down to a decision. And, and I do take that decision very seriously. And that decision for me is always about safety. So that's, that's what it goes, sort of goes to my head, not shortening the year, not, not anything else. And I do take into consideration that our educators also have, potentially have their students at home with them as well. So I think what you experienced this year was 2 very traditional full-snow days and 1, 1 remote day that we attempted on a Friday. And again, I think that as of late, we've just had traditional snow days. So I'm listening and, but.
Yes, I'm sorry to imply that I didn't think you should be choosing snow days. I was specifically addressing the remote snow day piece because that is changing methodology. I was specifically addressing the remote snow day piece because that is changing methodology and scheduling. So I, I thought that would be more worth of discussion. And I, and I do still feel like it's left as a, as a question mark. You know, if we do have another, if we do have another snow day in March, what's going to happen? I don't know.
Well, I'll say we'll have a traditional day. How's that?
Okay.
That's definitive.
And then we'll push it to June 17th. That's, that's fine with me. So we'll, we can do that for this year. For next year, if the state says remote instruction is a possibility, which they have not said prior to, but if they change their mind, then Madam Chair, we should have that conversation then as a committee as to whether you will allow that change in instructional modality, if you want us to take, to take advantage of that tool. So that will be a larger conversation next year. My prediction is that it won't be allowed, but if they do allow it, we can take it back to the committee and have that conversation again. So Ms. Culburn, does that help as well?
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you, Beth.
Thank you.
Martha, go ahead.
I want to just support what you're saying, Ms. Culburn, regarding the equity issues for our students with special needs and how the services are just not the same when they're remote. I think that's also true for the typical students in the general ed classroom. But I also hear Dr. Conde, I want to support you that for this year, having traditional snow days is, I, is the way I would like to see us go. I would encourage you to do that. There's been so much disruption and so little time in school that if we have to extend another day so that we have another day in school, this year of all years, that's a really good idea, I think. So I want to encourage you to continue along that thing.
Okay, why don't we move on to school building facilities?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bob, you have a report, the evaluation feasibility study on the high school that you want to go over with the committee.
Actually, what's in front of the committee is a proposal so we can get a report. So again, the proposal has been shared with you. As everybody who's in the committee right now, Coach Superintendent and most people listening know that we have submitted to the MSBA for eight years, looking to either renovate and/or overhaul the Burlington High School. HVAC system, while it's been maintained, is original to the building, close to 50 years old. This year, we shifted our focus from the MSBA over to Fox Hill, our elementary school, but that doesn't alleviate us from the need of an HVAC system at the high school. So the proposal in front of you is a feasibility study, which is similar to what the MSBA would do if we were selected to move forward with one of our proposals. The feasibility study is not the final decision. What it does is it comes in and assesses our building. It looks at a few main areas, which we determined and selected. So it's going to look at the HVAC system, the plumbing, electrical, the current fire protection, the architectural and the structural size of the building. Then what it will do is assess those, give us some recommendations on the repairs that are needed, any types of triggers that are going to happen because of the cost of replacement. And I'll explain what a trigger is in one second. And like you said, it's going to give us some cost estimates on that of some actual facts. Quite simply, I would say, instead of saying, hey, build us a house and tear down my old one, this is actually going in and doing a study saying to tear down the old house is going to cost X and to build the house with these specs is going to cost X. So we're going to know what we're getting into before we rip down all the walls or rip down the current HVAC system. So when I said the word trigger, building code and state code says that 30% of the assessed value or 30% of the square footage of the property, if either of those are hit during a renovation or, or an upgrade of a property or building, then those are going to trigger the full code and accessibility codes that we would then have to bring the building up to. So for example, we do not have fire protection in the, in the term of sprinklers in the high school. If we were to hit that 30% threshold trigger on any work done here, it would require us to bring the fire protection up to code, which would be adding sprinklers. So that's an additional cost that would incur us. It also is going to look at anything that's an accessibility code. So anything that has to do with ADA accessibility, whether or not our ramps are, meet the grade, any places where we are not meeting accessibility, we would then no longer be grandfathered in and have to upgrade to meet that code. And again, it's 30% of the value, which currently is just over $50 million is what the town has assessed the property at. So our trigger is approximately $16 million, which again, large number. But in our assessment four years ago of the property, we were looking somewhere in the 12 to 18 million dollars. And that's before we even ripped down the ceiling and started looking at what was really behind the walls. This is a more in-depth look at what is behind the walls. And I do want to stress that this is not the final step, that this does not install an HVAC system. After this report, we would then come back to the committee, or I would, and we would discuss the findings of this. Hopefully, again, we don't have any structural problems or architectural problems and we're really just looking at the HVAC assessment of it, but we'll know that answer. Once we know what the funding is, or at least the cost estimate, we would then need to seek funding and then of course go out to bid for an actual installer. The people performing these are the architect and engineering firm that we went out to bid for, for in-house and on-call architect and engineering firms. So they would be including this without going out to bid. But installing some type of system again, is probably going to trigger thresholds where we're going to have to go out to bid and looking for a complete system. So I know one of the questions that I had been asked about is whether or not this is assessing any other types of systems. I did have a meeting with both of these firms yesterday and I asked that question in particular. I think the wording in the report is that they will include recommendations to replace the HVAC, HVAC system based on current like high efficiency and equipment, but then compare it against return on investment on other lesser common systems that are available. And their explanation to me was, is that there's a million ways to heat and cool a place, but what is really common around this area is what they're going to assess it on, but they can compare it against other systems. So whether it's biofuel or geothermal, that's something that they compare to. But at the same exact time, it's not necessarily the most current or available systems around here. If we choose to pursue a system like that, this report is not going to block us from doing that. It's just going to give us some information on potentially what a system like that may cost us, what it would take for us to see our return on investment versus just a high efficiency system that is more readily available to install. So again, all I'm looking for right now is really just informational. Of course, any questions if I need to bring back or if something was missed on the proposal. I'm not looking for funding. This is something that we do have warrant articles to pay for. But again, I'll accept any answers, of course, and try to answer as best as I can, if you all have any.
Anyone have questions? Martha?
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad to hear that, that you had this meeting. And I just want to confirm, I was the one who asked you about will this report give us information on the standard way of heating and cooling and using energy? Or will this give us options that are the most energy efficient, that will help reduce our carbon footprint? And is that what you're referring to? You didn't, you know, there are different ways to describe it. But when you say other systems, is that what you're referring to? They will give us information about what? I just want us to have a report that gives us all the options, including the most energy efficient options, including the most carbon reducing options, that we can then make choices based on cost and other factors like energy usage and carbon footprint. So am I correct that that's what you're saying? They will give us all of the different options?
Through the chair, so I'm hoping this was a figure of speech. All of the options, probably not unless I specify them. The most competitive and common that are typical to this area is what they're looking to compare. I did specifically ask on geothermal. And again, it is something that they will include. But my understanding is that not necessarily common around here. The return on investment is not necessarily the best, you know, compared against the initial upfront. And the cost of digging holes hasn't gone down. So that's something that's going to drive the cost up. But that is something I specifically asked. Another thing is, is that with our building being so old, the equipment being so old, we're looking at 75 to maybe 80% efficiency. Where new equipment now is running in like 93 to 96% efficiency. Also, based on us being a school, the size of the project, we would require to install a LEED certified HVAC system as well. So while it's not, what's it called? It's not a net zero on our carbon footprint. It is certified or would be a certified LEED energy efficient system. So that would be a requirement.
Ms. Madam Chair? Yes. Good. I, I mean, I didn't think geothermal was probably a great option, but I'm glad they're going to consider it because I think that the high school's built on ledge and on wetlands. So I, you know, but I haven't heard the term heat pumps. I haven't heard about additional solar or battery storage. So, and it may be that heat pumps don't work on a building that's as spread out as the high school is, for example. But I just want to make sure that all those different options are being considered. I know that the town of Lexington has either built or is in the process of building two net zero buildings. I also know that the, the high school is not building from scratch. So there are many options that are not available. But I just want to be sure that this report gives us all of our options. So if you could continue to have that conversation with them, I think it's really important that we be able to choose. And I mean, what you said about triggers, I, I, you know, if, if we have to spend a certain amount of money just to fix the HVAC, that it means we also have to upgrade our fire sprinklers. I think that's great. And that we also have to upgrade our air quality. I think that's great. And that we have to put accessibility in so that people in a wheelchair could attend our school committee meetings when we go back to meeting in person. That's, I want those things to be included. So it does seem likely that those will have to be included. But I also want us to look at the project. If the town is going to invest this kind of money, what is the rate of return on investment? It, you know, may cost us extra. I know at Memorial, I believe that the roof, we, we were able, because of some cost underruns, if that's the right word, we were able to get a roof that was more energy efficient and it's going to save us money in the long run. So I just want to be sure we're not rebuild, renovating something to a place where it's not as good as we could have done. As we all know, I mean, it's, it's already almost too late for us to be changing the kind of fossil fuel burning that we're doing. And our, we only have this one planet. So we're going to renovate the high school with millions and millions of dollars. I just want to make sure all of our options are available to help us reduce the carbon footprint. And, you know, we use different terms and I know that there's some real specifics, but I think you get the idea. And I appreciate that you've been asking those questions and just want to make sure we do. One last thing is that I do know that there's a, there's a fellow in Lexington who's been kind of spearheading their work to reduce carbon footprints in the buildings all through town, not just schools, Mark Sandin. And he has given presentations in a number of places. So if we wanted to, we could have him come and give a presentation as well to find out what other options we might want to consider.
Martha, a lot of this is determined by SBA.
But this project is not determined by MSBA.
Well, it depends if, if we get any money from them or not, and, and whether or not we can get any retroactively.
And through the chair, if I may, Martha, thank you. I do want to stress that obviously the HVAC is only one part of the energy efficient side of it. That's why the structural and the architectural side of it is important as well. You know, there's potentially a lot of lost heat, you know, in the size of the hallways, in the ceiling systems, in the windows and the doors. So that's something that will be looked at and assessed at as well. The electrical system potentially could be inefficient with some of the older equipment that's in there. And of course, our plumbing system as well, too. People don't necessarily look at plumbing and think that, hey, we're wasting money there. But some of our systems, of course, are electronic, the pumps to run those, motor driven and so forth. So again, there's a whole package that obviously looking at trying to reduce, you know, our carbon footprint. And that would be part of the big certification of being LEED, of course, is to try to meet that energy reduction. And again, not necessarily net zero, but to be a well-established, energy efficient, either install or a building or a system.
Are there any other members with questions? So Bob, what would you, what do you need from us? Do you need a vote on anything?
No, just informational and again, just a field questions from you all.
Okay, when you said that it was in front of us, what are you talking about? We didn't see it.
Um, was it?
In our, our.
It's in your packet and was shared with you.
Oh, all right. Okay, in the packet, yes. Okay, Eric, anything else on this topic?
No, ma'am. We have a lot of work to do with the high school. I don't think that's a surprise to, to anyone on the committee. And Bob, it's not in the agenda item, but we're, we're preparing a video of a Fox Hill for MSBA. They want to do a virtual tour.
Yep.
Bob, and when is that, we're going to try, when is that due? I'm trying to remember.
So it's due on March 5th. I did, again, through the chair, I met today over at that building with Principal David Rosenblatt and Kevin Baker, the senior custodian. We did, I took some videos today, some still pictures. And I want to thank Jordan Marino. He came over today with his drone to get some aerial footage out there. He shared some clips with me tonight and he volunteered to help me a little bit. So I'm saying that publicly to remind him that he did say that and that I will be reaching out to him for some of his assistance in video production. But that being said, right now, really, it's just kind of putting a lot of that video together. We do have a little over two plus weeks or two weeks or so to get that done, but I hope to have that done sooner. Of course, we'll share that with the committee as well. But because MSBA is not necessarily meeting in person and we've had virtual phone calls, while we would host them in person at the school for a tour, this video will be able to showcase the building. But at any time, if they would like to, we will gladly host them at the building and give them a walkthrough.
Okay. Is it time to move on to student diagnostic results?
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Bob.
So Bob, I think you have some slides. We're going to be joined this evening by Susan Stone, our RTI coordinator. I know in your comments that Mary Hood, Mary had a, a death in her, so she will be with us tonight. Go out to her. Susan, thank you for your patience right here. And I just wanted to, the committee asked for some look at student progress in terms of this year. We are universally screening our students, which is an important part of our process at the elementary level. And we do have some diagnostic information. This is an atypical year. I think we've spent a lot of time tonight talking about the atypical year. I think that we just wanted to, I think we have three or four slides. So it's not a very in-depth. This is a view from above. It's a district view. And I think what you'll see is that our students are making progress and they are learning. And saying that, I certainly don't want to discount all of the other concerns about mental health. about mental health, anxiety, and other things that were brought up. This is a relatively narrow look at some of our diagnostics that the committee asked us to present. So that's where we are. So Susan, thank you for joining us this evening.
Hi, Susan. You did. Susan, you muted.
Well, I was unmuted previously, but I must have been quiet for too long. Good evening, everyone. Bob, if you wanted to put up the slide. So this evening, I'm going to share with you some reading and math academic data that we typically follow and we thought it would be helpful to share that with you. Bob, if you want to go to the next slide. To begin, we wanted to share a, our MTSS or RTI triangle. And MTSS is multi-tiered systems of support or also known as RTI response to intervention. And this is kind of the foundation of what we aim for. We are always looking to have eighty percent of our students, you know, in the, at the grade level range. That is for teachers to work with the students, that in classroom instruction is, is fine for them. We have maybe fifteen percent of students that perhaps are a little below grade level or borderline. And those students are considered tier two. We expect that if we give them targeted interventions, we will be able to close the gap. And then our tier three students, about five percent of those students, and they are students that have more significant gaps. They need some intensive instruction. And, you know, we're closely monitoring them to see if perhaps they need a special ed referral if their progress isn't forthcoming. Bob, if you could go to the next slide. I added this slide because it's a little easier to read. Although our MTSS or RTI is scaled back this year, we are still following the basic principles. We are doing what's called universal screening three times a year, which is in reading and in math. And where all the students participate in a test and we monitor those results. But we also look at the individual students and how they are doing and identify some interventions that we can give them. This year, because of the situation we're in, we're offering a lot of our web-based platforms in iReady, Lexia, ST Math and Symphony Math. And then the teachers are being highly creative in trying to make adjustments to instruction to meet their needs. We are monitoring all students from the student level to the class level, to the school level and a district level. So none of that has, has changed. The goal for this year is really growth. Wherever the students started, we want to see them grow and develop. And we want to see progress. We want everyone to be moving forward. We're hopeful if we can keep everyone on a good track, that next year, when we're back to our more robust program, we'll be able to narrow those gaps next year. Next slide, Bob. Now, this is a graph of our iReady reading results. BOY stands for beginning of year and MOY is middle of year. Blue is our tier one students, yellow are our borderline students and red are at-risk students. iReady is given to students in grades one through five. And it is based on standard scores, which means at every assessment, we have, let's say it was three hundred to be in the tier one, three hundred above for tier one in the fall or the beginning of the year, it will be four hundred perhaps for the middle of the year and five hundred for the end of the year. So the goal is always increasing at each assessment period. Meaning that if you were to stay at the same percentage, that means you've made the correct, the amount of growth that we were hoping for. What I'd like to point out with, to start with on this slide is looking at the beginning of, this is going from beginning of the year 2019 to the middle of the year 2020 and the beginning of the year of this year 2020 to the middle of the year 2021. So the first thing I wanted to look at is how did the students start the year after months of remote instruction plus the summer months? And you'll see, if you look at the tier one of 2019, forty-eight percent of the students entered the year in tier one. This year, despite the pandemic, fifty-one percent of our students entered the year in tier one. I thought this was quite remarkable, considering all that everyone went through in the spring and the summer, knowing how hard the teachers were working to try to make the remote learning work, knowing how overwhelmed parents were trying to handle their children at home. And I think that together, this speaks a lot of the partnership between the teachers, the principals and the parents. Even if you look at the tier two, from the beginning of the year last year to this year, forty-two percent in tier two on a typical year and thirty-eight percent starting the year this year. And our tier three was exactly the same. So a lot of hard work went in on everyone's part to, to meet us, the students' needs. Now, moving on to the middle of the year 2020, you'll see a significant jump in our tier one students. And this is typical. The students come in after summer and then we make a lot of growth. And you'll see at sixty-seven percent of tier one, almost nineteen percentile point jump from beginning of the year to the middle of the year on more of a typical year. This year, you will see, although not as great as a jump, we went to fifty-six percent from starting at fifty-one percent. Art, which means students were growing more than just the expected interval. If you look at our tier two in the beginning of the year, it was thirty-eight percent. Middle of the year is thirty-eight percent. That means that they grew the expected amount from one assessment to the other. And our tier three actually decreased. It started at ten percent, it went to six percent. It didn't decrease as much as the year before, which went to four percent. But overall, the results are certainly somewhat comforting in that we're making growth. Students are moving along. This is just a big picture view that we look at. You know, individual students is what the classroom teachers and the principals are looking at and trying to make adjustments there. But this, this is for, from the two years together. Bob, if you go to the next slide. This is the same information, I just visualized it differently. This shows the two beginning of the year results compared to the two middle of the year results. So Bob, if you go to the next slide, I'll move into math. Math is our Symphony Math. It is also nationally normed. The iReady is nationally normed. But what is different about the Symphony Math is we're allowed to set our own benchmark for what we consider at risk. So we wanted to set a little higher than the national norms. That will be kind of, it impacts sort of the, the ratio between the tier two. The tier three is a little different. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that point out. The other thing I wanted to note is that we did not administer Symphony Math to the kindergarten in the beginning of the year. It had to do with the way the schedule was rolling out. So we just started with them in the middle of the year. So here you will see a typical year in 2019. Eighty-two percent of our students come in, in tier one. Five percent tier two, eight percent at risk. That's where it's a little different because of our benchmarks. But you'll see mid-year, it goes to eighty-seven percent. At the beginning of this year, the students came in a little under what they typically come under. They came in under seventy-five percent, which is still an excellent starting point for the beginning of the year. And you'll see it is a little bit less for the middle of the year at seventy-two percent. I think in part due to the kindergartners not being part of the overall testing in the fall. But you'll see that our tier two and our tier three have actually improved a little. Bob, if you want to do the next slide. This is the same data, just again, in a different visualization with the two beginning of the years and the two middle of the years together. So overall, the students are growing. We are, I know that the, this is the kind of all the work that teachers and principals doing because that's what they, that's what they have been focusing on. And I think the family support that's going on and that we are always so grateful to have in Burlington, very supportive families, that the students are hanging in there. I don't know what the end of the year results will be, but I'm confident that if we are in this position mid-year, this, at this time this year, that we have a good chance of ramping up next year with our interventions and closing gaps. And so that's, that's the basic reading and math summary.
So again, Madam Chair, just to wrap this up a bit is our students are making progress. And I think that what we are missing is more of the, the targeted reports and that we have available during the, during a more normal year that we're looking at back. Susan, could you move your?
You broke up a little bit.
Could you mute? Thanks, I was getting feedback from somebody, but now it sounds better to me. Thank you. So, and the interesting thing with all of the assessment data we have, the assessment scores is what I just want to always remind people is that there are, the assessment score, there's, there are a lot of talented people behind those scores. Our teachers, assistants, our tutors, our principals, certainly the parent support that Susan mentioned. And our student efforts are, are behind the results there. So again, we don't have, this is a view from ten thousand feet. I think it's what the school committee asked us to show. What we're hearing from the state, not to broaden this conversation too much, but what they're looking to do with MCAS this year is to use it as a diagnostic. And again, our frustration with that is we already have our own diagnostics in place. So if they're not using it for accountability, we would rather use our own, our own diagnostics, but that's where, again, that's a state decision that we'll, we'll deal with moving forward. As Susan said, we have this information from the district perspective, from the school perspective, from the grade level perspective and from the individual student perspective. And we use it to shape the instruction the students get and, and to make sure that everyone is, we, we don't miss anybody. And I would say that's the, one of the most impressive things about our elementary schools, our principals and our, all of our educators is that they know their students well. And, and so again, Mrs. Monaco, not, not a typical year for us. And I think we're, we could use more of the structures that we have in place during a full day, and I will acknowledge that. But our students haven't fell off a cliff in terms of, in terms of their, in terms of their progress at the elementary level that we're going to.
Eric and Susan, these are elementary schools, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's where we have, we just started iReady at the middle school. We didn't have a prior year to, to compare. So the, the screening we've done, been doing at the elementary level for, for a while.
Okay, and most of the time the kids are in the buildings is spent on core curriculum?
Yes, they're, they do have a special during the day, a special activity. But a lot of the time when the kids are in person, they're getting explicit instruction in core, yes.
Any questions from the committee members? Martha?
I just want to reinforce that this is an academic screening and it's an academic report. And the progress that our students are making academically, as Dr. Cuddy said at the beginning, that's not to minimize the emotional difficulties that many of our students are having. But it's, it's good to know that at least in the academic areas, it does not appear that there's been huge loss in, in, in any areas in the elementary level. So, thank you.
Again, from a very large perspective, Ms. Simon. So I think there may be individual kids that we need to address, but we have every confidence that we will identify that student and work with that student and catch that student up. So I think with a couple new members, I think it may make sense over the next six months, I hate picking a date, but maybe we'll do a little bit more about our elementary reading and, and sort of math structures. And because while the, the assumption here with all of the structures is that we have talented teachers. And so that's the, that's the assumption that's going in place. And we do have that in Burlington. We're just looking at the curriculum and instruction paired together. So you, you really want your core experience to, to impact. As, you know, what we're trying to say is, you know, the tier one and tier two are really, are really true core experiences. So ninety-five percent of your students should be making progress in the core curriculum that they're receiving. So that's one of the things that we, we really look for pretty carefully at the elementary level.
Okay, and any other questions? Thank you, Susan. That was, that was very informational. We really appreciate it. And it's nice to see you. Erica, are we ready to move on to budget issues?
Yeah. So again, I know Mr. Riggs is patiently waiting and I apologize that we're getting to it now. The, what I wanted to wait for your attendance on was the conversation about the school budget guideline. And we typically have a vote of the school committee or you choose not to vote on the, on the guideline. So the guidelines we discussed at the last meeting that came out of the Ways and Means meeting was a, I think a blended three point three five percent increase, which would mean a three point five percent budget guideline for the school moving forward. And Nicole, it's been a while since the meeting, so just make sure I'm accurate with what I'm saying. So I think the budget item that we would be, the committee would have discussed again is the three point five percent guideline that Ways and Means approved for the school for fiscal twenty-two.
I prefer not to vote on this at all, but I'd like the opinions of the committee members. Tom?
Yeah. I personally have no problem voting on it. We typically do. Obviously, this year is, is a little bit different procedurally than we Obviously, this year is a little bit different procedurally than we have to deal with in the past. And we obviously also did not get as much of an adjustment in the budget as we would have liked to have received. However, it's not as usual year. And I've always found value in going to town meeting in a unified manner with the town on Budget Matters. I think it sends a good message. And I would, I think it's a good idea, a good idea to vote for it for those reasons. And I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair, to get something on the table that the school committee adopt the budget guideline put forward by the Ways and Means Committee, that being a three-point-two-five percent blended town operating budget with three-point-five percent allocated to the school department.
Is there a second?
Martha?
All right. The reason I don't want to vote on it is because I don't think it's enough money. And I hate to promise to stick with a guideline that I can't match. But if you want to vote, we'll vote. So how do the other committee members feel?
I, I have to comment, Madam Chair.
Martha?
Yeah, I, last year we gave a look at the guideline, and I was concerned. And I was just concerned about, is there enough money as I was last year? Because I know their positions that we've been hoping to have for years, we may or may not be able to have, that kind of thing. But I also want to respect that it's this is a regular year, and that the town, although they certainly have quite a lot of money in their reserves, that it's a really different year. And I'd like to, I support what Mr. Murphy said about trying to go in coordination with the town this year, given the remarkable situation as we've been discussing. It's been pretty difficult on the best of the town. So that's why I'm in favor of it.
Okay. Carl and Catherine, do you have any opinions on it?
Well, Madam Chair, I guess my question would be, I mean, I agree with what Mr. Murphy said, but I also agree with you. What would our options be? Would we go back to Ways and Means? Would we ask town meeting? How would that work as a new member? I'm just curious.
What happened last year was, I think we ended up with slightly more than we started out with because we came to agreements with Ways and Means and with the town. Do I have that right, Eric?
Yes, I think you all advocated for an additional, it might have even been a quarter point in the process. But Mr. Foss, to answer your question, is we need a number to build the budget around. So, so what we'll be showing tonight after this, and we might as well blend the agenda items if that would add some clarity, is what we have a draft budget that we built around a three-point-five percent, three-point-five percent guideline. So we honestly need something to pin the budget to. And that's the number that we're using. If you feel the budget is insignificant, then you might request, you can request, the committee can request that we add to that. And then Nicole can certainly tell you the percentage increase, that the impact that that would have. And then you would need to go back to Ways and Means to argue your point, and ultimately to town meeting to argue your point. As Mr. Murphy said, I always think it's better to work together and to, you know, reach agreement before we get to town meeting. And at some point, the budget, though, will become the school committee budget, and we'll need to reflect what you want. And again, Madam Chair, Mr. Murphy wants to interject, so I'll stop.
Tom?
I just wanted him to stop.
I know that.
No, I, I, I share the chair's concern and the other members who have expressed the concern. A guideline is guideline. It's not a, it's not a hard and fast wall that you can't go beyond. And as you've mentioned in years past, sometimes circumstances arise, whether it's coming back in September because we need another school kindergarten class. There's all sorts of things that happen that could lead us to go in some other direction, or at least attempt to. But the guideline that was adopted by the Ways and Means is what they're going to be looking for. And if we just disregard it and come in with whatever we want to do, we'll be going to town meeting with a negative Ways and Means vote, in all likelihood. And I don't think that does anybody any good. In years past, we've been able to work with the town between Ways and Means and the town administration. If circumstances warrant us needing something additional or something different, and typically we're able to sit down and work something out. But I think just ignoring their guideline, they all put a lot of time into it. They've all tried to deal with the same problems we're dealing with. I just think that sends the wrong message.
Tom, could you just modify the motion to, to accommodate the fact that we'll try to meet the guideline rather than, you know, accepting, fully accepting the guideline? That's my hangup with it. I don't, of course, we're going to try to meet the guideline. But, but I just, I don't like promising to do something and then not being able to do it. It's worrying for me.
Right, and I think you're pressing it a little thinly. The, I think the motion was to approve the guideline. To me, I feel it's a, it's a reasonable guideline under all the circumstances that have already discussed. And I'm certainly willing to approve it. If something changes down the road and we think we need more money, you know, that's a different story. But as we sit here now, I think it's a worthy goal that we should be working towards because that's what's been determined to be in the best interest financially of the town at this point. So whether you want to call it approving it or, or whatever other word you put in there, to me, it's the same thing. I think it's giving us a goal to work towards. And I think we send a good message by trying to be a good teammate and work towards that, towards that goal.
All right, let's just vote on it unless someone else has a comment. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the guideline. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Ms. Bond?
Aye.
And with some reluctance, I will vote aye. So that's unanimous. So why don't we just move on, Eric? You muted.
Nicole's been working hard on the fiscal twenty-two draft budget. Again, for the new committee members, we, we are planning around the three-point-five percent guideline. We are going to break the budget into smaller pieces, but it's a relatively large budget. And you're going to, you received a two-page summary tonight. But the, what I just want to make sure that I explain is that the two-page summary, those numbers are coming from three hundred pages of backup that Nicole has created that sort of end up in her spreadsheets to the cover pages. So what you're seeing are cover pages and cost centers, and Nicole can discuss that. The process is, again, we have the budget calendar. We have some meetings scheduled where we'll talk about individual sections of the school budget. The presentations this year will be abbreviated from how they've been in the past just because the timeframe is a little bit abbreviated. So while you may hear about the high school budget, for instance, and Mark will be available, Mark won't be doing a presentation to the committee on that night. We're just trying to compress the time a little bit. But we want you to make sure that you can ask questions directly of the people who are in charge of the cost centers in the budget, if you have questions. And we'll get you all the information. I know Mr. Riggs is on the phone. We will, on the call, on the Zoom, we will schedule the education subcommittee meetings, you know, during the same time, and we'll be discussing the budget moving forward. But I know we covered a lot of ground in this evening's agenda. This is sort of the budget kickoff. But really, a significant part of our conversations, I know are going to be about bringing students back to school. But if we want to have schools open fully in the fall, we need a budget. So we're going to have to spend some time talking about the budgetary aspects of getting schools open in the, in the fall as well. So Nicole, you emailed that to the staff. Bob, do you have a copy of that? And I just want to make sure, again, Nicole puts in a tremendous amount of time. I want to thank her for that. And maybe you can expand it a little bit?
Sure. So I guess, as you're aware, this current fiscal year, our operating budget was reduced by three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand at September town meeting. Through these reductions, our operating budget for twenty-one went from fifty-five million, four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, nine-thirty-eight to fifty-five million, two-hundred-and-four-thousand, nine-thirty-eight. This also includes the increase for the eighty-one thousand. That was to partially fund the Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion position. With that being said, we're starting out with a base budget of that reduced number for FY twenty-two. And as Dr. Conti mentioned, the FY twenty-two guideline for school operating is three-point-five percent, which provides us with about a one-point-nine-million-dollar increase to the budget for FY twenty-two. Salaries are what drive about eighty-seven percent of our budget. And going into next year, we have unsettled contracts for all unions, with the exception of custodians and instructional assistants. All available remaining funds to support increases for open contracts for next year are on budget line number twelve of the summary that you received under the negotiated salary adjustments. And just a few other things to note about the budget draft that you received. This assumes a typical reopening of schools for next fiscal year. So no additional remote academy teachers, normal transportation schedules, et cetera. There are no additional position requests included in this budget except for the remaining portion of the salary for the Director of Diversity Equity and Inclusion, which was budgeted here at a hundred-and-thirty-thousand. It is included in budget line number eight under Directors. And I guess just one other thing that I wanted to note was, this is just the operating budget draft. The accommodated budget, which consists of BCC, special ed, outer district, and lab tuitions, and certain in district staffing for special ed programs, will, will follow the operating budget. We always want to make sure that we capture the most accurate information in terms of tuitions for, for these students for the budget. And currently, there's a move-in law in place that basically states that if a student moves into the district before April one, we become the financially responsible district for the student's tuition. So we, we try to make a conscious effort to make sure that we get as close to that cutoff as possible. You know, because if we have, say, you know, maybe a residential move-in, it can adjust the budget upwards of two-hundred thousand. So that's really all I have there, if anyone has any questions.
Just, I had a question in regards to, you were talking about tuitions and why they aren't putting in this budget. Is that why there's nothing in line sixty-six? Is that why that's blank?
Yeah, so this, this follows, I keep like the same format as the monthly financial reports. And typically, there's, there's two columns. There's one that's operating budget, and there's one that's accommodated. So line sixty-six is, happens to be one of the lines that only falls in accommodated. So, so yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to stress something Nicole said. This doesn't have any additional positions. Only the Director of Equity and Inclusion, diversity equity inclusion position that's been included. If we see an enrollment spike, if the committee is committed to class sizes of eighteen below at the elementary level, you know, we need to get you some enrollment information, and we will be doing that as we move forward in the, in the budget, in the budget process. So we did have some students leave the district because of the pandemic scheduling. If those students return, it may force us to need some additional positions, which we would then come back to the committee to, to support. So, Mr. Foss, I, I hope the context of the budget provides, I hope the context better answers your question from before. We sort of built these numbers around the three-point-five percent. But if the, if the situation or the values that you want to have in the programming for fiscal twenty-two don't match this, then we need to make a change.
Nicole, Nicole, tuition is, what tuitions is that?
I'm sorry, on line sixty-six?
Yeah.
So those would, those would be special ed, out-of, out-of-district placements or our lab placements?
So I can only see a little bit of this page. Are we looking at accommodated?
No, no, that's, I was, I was describing why we, we only do operating first, and we wait to back up to that April one move-in law deadline to do accommodated. So this is, this is only the, the operating right now.
Okay. Any other questions from the committee?
I, yeah, I actually, I lost track of one of my questions. I know, Dr. Conti, you referred to if we have a lot of students. Is this, is this budget predicated on the number of students we have now, not including all the students who did leave to go to other schools this year because of our pandemic scheduling?
Ms. Simon, through the chair, we are looking at relatively steady enrollment. So, so we just need to look at our, again, our kindergarten numbers need to take better steps. So we will be getting more information on, on that. I think some parents might have made some different decisions because of the year that we were in, that we'll see what the impact of that is. But we're not expecting an enrollment spike. We may in fact see if students were placed into a private school, for instance, if they're having a very positive experience, the parents may choose to keep them in that, in that setting. So just our enrollment projections are going to be a little bit more interesting moving forward this year than they would be typically, I guess. But we're not, this budget is built on a relatively stable enrollment.
So you've included as many teachers as say we needed last fall?
Yeah.
Okay.
But not, not the teachers we added for the remote, for the remote academy.
And through the chair, I have another question. On page one, line seven is assisted principals, and it says that we have seven. And I can only think of five. And I was wondering if you could explain where those are.
I'll try, let me see, we have.
Through the chair, I can explain.
Go ahead.
So at the, at the high school, there's, they're labeled associate principals, and so they're also included in that line?
Oh, so that's three?
Yes.
So there's three at the high school. Then, okay, I had thought counted only two. And we have two at the middle school. And we have one at Francis Wyman. And that's six.
And then at the high school, there's associate principals?
So how many are there altogether at the high school?
Whatever's left. There's Sean Hart. There's Sean Hart, Joe Adabato.
Oh, okay. So Martha, I mean, Ms. Simon, she's including Joe in that line. So that would be your seven.
There we go. Okay, thank you. I had, so I saw that number and I thought, oh, did we find room in this budget to add an assistant principal to two of the elementary schools? It got me all excited, but I had forgotten about those other positions. Okay, next year. Thank you.
Nicole, do you have more or is that it?
Nope, that's it.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just a quick question, not on the budget that Nicole just presented, but have we had any information yet from Town Hall as to warrant articles and what's going to be available for that? Last time I heard, they hadn't really talked about it yet.
Through the chair, Mr. Murphy, I, I haven't heard anything. Again, Mr. Riggs was on the, was on the, was that in the meeting? I'm not sure if there's been any change, but I haven't, I haven't heard of, I haven't gotten any.
Okay, thank you.
Roger, you got any comments?
So on the, on the particular about warrant articles, I don't have anything specific. The general, I think in the discussion with the selectmen, the general approach to warrant articles was going to be fairly prioritized needs over wants and some other things. I think we'll have to find out the details. On this budget proposal here, you know, I don't, I haven't had a chance to compare it with last year or other things. So I don't have too much to say about it, given that we have contracts, you have contracts that are unsettled. That leaves some variables to be worked out. I'm assuming that the numbers here built, built in existing steps for the most part. And usually the big variable is cost of living or, or other negotiated aspects of the contracts. So it looks like a good baseline to me, but there are lots of details. So thank you, Nicole.
Okay, anyone else? Eric, will we be going into this in more detail in future meetings?
Yes, we'll be going into the individual cost centers. And as I said, this sheet is just the numbers that come up from all of the sheets that are behind it. So Nicole, you'll be getting the committee a digital, a digital document that we discussed. What will they be receiving? I can refer.
Definitely before the next meeting. I don't, I don't have an exact date set. I just, I just need to get it all put together.
Nicole, will we be able to see behind the pages, you know, the, the details?
Yeah, so for instance, say on line 37 Fox Hill, you will be able to see what, like what makes up that $79,866 right down to the detail of their contracted services, materials and supplies, equipment, et cetera.
And how do you do that with the document?
So this, this first page that, that you see, these first two summary pages, there'll just be links on, on each line that you'll be able to click and it will, it will take you right to the backup behind all those.
Okay, Ways and Means gets that also?
Correct.
This is Jayya Vorgenti. Would we be getting hard copies of this budget?
Hi, Jayya.
Hi. Question is, are we getting hard copies as well?
Yes, Jayya. So I had spoken with Roger earlier in this week and he mentioned that both you and himself would be requesting hard copies. So we'll get those made for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on this topic? It looks like we're at the end of a long meeting.
Chair, I know we don't post these things until we've had a chance to see them. I'm wondering if this two-page document is something that would be posted now or would we wait until later?
Again, Martha, it's a, it's a public document. We can certainly do it. But it's not going to have a whole lot of meaning for people until we move through the process.
Okay.
You know, we can certainly make, make the, it's a public document at this point, so we can certainly make it available.
Okay, that'd be good. And because even if it just means that at our next meeting, people will have this outline, a little bit of them while we discuss different things, they will have that number in front of them as they discuss, just like when we get these documents on our meeting packets, we have a chance to look at them before we discuss them. So I think it could be helpful for people who are trying to follow the budget process. Thank you.
Okay, is there anything else to come before the committee?
Just a very brief reminder of your training tomorrow night between seven and nine with Dr. Wernham. So I'll make sure Sharon, Sharon sends out another reminder tomorrow.
Yeah, do we have the, the links for that?
We do. We'll make sure that you all have them again.
Okay. Martha?
I also wanted to go back to your recommend, your request that we as a school committee send a letter to the governor.
Yes.
In the last two weeks, I've, every parent I've spoken to, I have encouraged to not just the governor, but also Commissioner Riley to put teachers back at the top of the list of people to be vaccinated. I have sent my own letters. I've sent letters to our legislators and I would love to send a letter as a group if we are willing to have that conversation now and make a decision if we can do that.
Eric, how do you want to go about it?
We'll get some drafted and get it due.
Okay.
So we just need to say we want to do it?
Yeah, I believe the chair already made the request. We'll get something to you all and you can look at it, edit it. And if you like it, we'll send it out.
Eric, I have a request that it be short and to the point, naming the, the harmful effects on kids as a reason why we would like teachers prioritized.
Yep. And I'll make sure we copy Representative Gordon and our other local-
Senator Friedman.
Senator Friedman, thank you. I apologize.
And Les is more.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the committee? I will accept a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Foss?
Aye.
Mrs. Bond?
Aye.
Ms. Simon?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.